Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you. Tonight, we'll do a roll call, and then we just have one item. Liz?
Mayor Dickey.
Here. Mayor Dickey. Vice Mayor Sharnow.
Here.
Councilmember Tollis.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Magazin.
Here.
Councilmember Friddell.
Here.
Councilmember Spelitch.
Present.
Thank you. Before we start, I wanted to just say a few things. We've lost some community leaders over the last month or so, including former Councilman Mike Archambeau and Councilman Ed Key. We express our caring thoughts and sympathy for their family and friends, and our gratitude to these fine people for their service to our community over all the years. We have, as our guest, chamber executive director, Betsy Lavoy. She's going to present the plan for the fair. Council will ask questions and make comments, and then we'll have a half hour of speaker testimony. We have the three-minute rule, which is the usual rule. Please watch for this red light, and there's a beep tone for when the three minutes is up. If you don't wish to speak, or you feel like the time is running short, please fill out a card with your position. Our clerk is going to be keeping track and will give us a tally. I'm going to ask for -- I can see this isn't going to happen, but please, let's not have disruptions to any -- you know, let's be respectful to everyone. This is the time to be respectful for everyone. There's a lot of people that want the fair to go on, and there's a lot of people that do not want the fair to go on. For example, we have our vendors, we have our artists. The chamber, they work very hard, year after year, on this effort. They're experiencing diminished income. They're struggling, like many. We're not going to be up here vilifying or ascribing negative motivations to those who are just trying to make a living and trying to survive. On the other hand, there's a lot of people that want to attend, who are eager to get a semblance of normalcy. I think we're all feeling that right now. Want fun back in their lives. They know the weather's going to be beautiful, and they're going to want to get out and enjoy it. And another group are those that feel that this is a risk right now. Maybe they've had family or friends that were personally affected by this disease, and feel maybe we can hold off for now to keep the numbers in check while the inevitable treatments and likely preventative measures become reality. So we're all here in good faith. We all have love for our community. And no matter which one of those perspectives are of yours, let's please begin by listening to the Director Lavoy, who will put forth what their plan is, and we'll move forward respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Dickey. Vice Mayor Sharnow, town council members, and the town staff, I thank you for the opportunity to share our health and safety plan. I speak on behalf of the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce for the Fountain Festival of Fine Arts and Crafts. You should have all received our health and safety packet previously today via email, but also a paper packet in front of you. And I wanted to start off and share with you that there are other valley events that are proceeding in Maricopa County before our show even. The first one is the Maricopa County Home Show. It's October 16th through the 18th, inside indoors at Westworld in Scottsdale. There's the Downtown Phoenix Farmers Market on October 3rd and October 10th. There's also the Litchfield Park Festival of Arts. They are proceeding with their arts and crafts festival and did get their local government approval. There's also the Phoenix Pride Parade, a gay pride parade and festival, November 7th, the weekend before our event. They will have 150 entertainment options on six different stages and over 300 vendor booths. Many of these events you'll see are quite large. As I said, you should have all received our public health and safety plan. It not only includes our health and safety plan, it also includes our artist, vendor, exhibitor, waiver, examples of our signage, as well as our code of conduct and expectations for guests that day. We will make that available on our website and all of our social media platforms for the next six weeks, if allowed to proceed, and I'll be going through it in detail tonight. As a leader in the industry for 46 years, the first Fountain Festival was in 1974. The Fountain Festival of Fine Arts and Crafts understands the impact and importance that our fairs have on our local businesses, the economy, and our community. We are determined and passionate to move forward, if allowed to do so, through these challenging times with utmost responsibility to the health and safety for all. We are prepared to implement strict physical distancing procedures, as well as detailed and thorough public health and safety plans. Through these new procedures, local businesses and artisans will have the opportunity to generate and earn new business, boost our local economy, and artisans will have -- I'm sorry, boost our local economy. And the purpose of this plan is to outline and describe the procedures the Fountain Festival of Fine Arts and Crafts will implement in downtown Fountain Hills to safely host this retail festival. The Fountain Festival of Fine Arts and Crafts is a retail arts festival that follows all requirements set forth by Governor Ducey's retail guidelines and the CDC's guidelines for considerations for events and gatherings. All guidelines have been drawn directly from the CDC, the World Health Organization, and the Arizona Department of Health Services and governmental guidelines. Changes will be made and adjusted upon recommendations and updates by governmental bodies, as well as the CDC, WHO, and the Arizona Department of Health Services. The Fall Festival is committed to the health and safety, particularly for this event, for COVID-19. The COVID-19 safety plan was prepared by the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce in cooperation with and with input from the Town of Fountain Hills to minimize public exposure to the virus. This COVID-19 safety plan has been prepared and will be implemented in accordance with the CDC and prevention guidelines for considerations for events and gatherings. That was updated July 7th of 2020 and in accordance with all applicable state and local requirements. The purpose of this plan is the protection of the artists, the protection of the volunteers, the protection of the vendors, the protection of the exhibitors, and of course, the protection of the attendees from exposure of COVID-19. Face coverings are required for all guests, all staff, all volunteers, all artists, all vendors, and all exhibitors, according to the Maricopa County mask ordinance, and will be strictly enforced. Our action plan. So I'm going to go through this in detail, and please, if you have any questions, write them down, and I'll make sure to answer them at the end. So per the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Guidance, under all circumstances, the Fountain Festival of Fine Arts and Crafts will achieve -- will adhere to the following guidance. Like I just mentioned, I really want to reiterate, all staff and volunteers, artisans, vendors, exhibitors, and guests will wear face coverings according to the mask ordinance from Maricopa County. Our signage will be placed throughout the show. This is an example of our signage. We have 13 different signs, and I do have a site plan map that I'll show you next. And these are reminders of all of the different reminders that they need to stay safe during this virus. Of course, the mask ordinance. Of course, increased sanitation procedures are in place throughout the event. Complementary hand sanitizing stations, complementary hand washing stations, six-foot-apart distancing stickers, as well as the symptoms to be watchful for. Every sign will have, "If you come into contact with someone with COVID-19 in the past 21 days or are at higher risk, please stay home. By participating and/or visiting the Fountain Festival of Fine Arts and Crafts, you voluntarily assume all risks related to the exposure of COVID-19." We plan to make all of our communication plan available for the next six weeks, if allowed to proceed. This site map is a layout of what we intend to have at the show. This is all new for the show, except for the star, which is the Chamber Information Booth, and the restrooms, which we've always provided. So what you will see, there are 13 new COVID safety reminder signs. Those are the orange spots, or the orange dots, on the map. There are seven designated sanitizing stations, and every vendor booth is encouraged to have their own hand sanitation, which in essence is over 400 sanitation stations at the event. We added five hand washing stations at every bathroom. Previously, the Portageons just had the hand sanitizers attached to the Portageon, but we added hand washing stations to those areas. We've added a private security detail with two to seven personnel. We've doubled our security. We've always had 24/7 security at the event from Wednesday through Sunday. We typically have 12 security personnel. We've added an additional 13 for over 25 security personnel at the event, plus the private security, plus the MCSO that we already secure for this event. To continue our action plan, we will have daily and frequent COVID-19 prevention announcement reminders on our speaker system that you can hear very audibly throughout the event, reminding attendees, vendors, and artisans to socially distance. Like I mentioned, we'll have complementary hand sanitizer stations, we'll have complementary hand washing stations. We are removing our event programs to cut down on any contact points. We are removing our Purple People volunteers to reduce booth-to-booth volunteer traffic. We are implementing six-feet-apart stickers on the ground in front of common areas, such as bathrooms, the information booth, and food booths. We do have a waiver that we are requiring all artists, all exhibitors, and all vendors to sign this year for this event, and I will read it to you now. It states, "By electronically agreeing to this waiver, I agree to the following terms at the 2020 Fall Fountain Festival of Fine Arts and Crafts. I will not open my booth for customers if I am exhibiting signs of potential COVID-19 symptoms, such as fatigue, coughing, fever, aches. I will take my temperature daily before opening of the show, and if my temperature is over 100 degrees, I will not open my booth for the day. I will provide a clean and sanitized booth for customers, which includes wiping down and sanitizing touched and shared surfaces, such as payment systems, counters, and merchandise. I will use contactless payment options, if able to do so, and understand the chamber has provided instructions to proceed with contactless payment opportunities. I will provide some type of partition between my booth and my neighbor to cut down on shared germs and the ability for customers to walk freely within the booth from booth to booth. I will wear a mask during all hours of the show, according to the Maricopa Mask Ordinance. If I have a medical condition that prohibits me from wearing a mask, I will post publicly. I will keep traffic in my booth to a minimum at one time, 10 people or less, and enforce the Maricopa Mask Ordinance within my booth. I will post the PDF sign provided to me stating the Maricopa Mask Ordinance and booth maximum occupancy, and I will respect the event staff and volunteers who are responsible for enforcing the above conditions. If an artisan, vendor, or exhibitor does not sign the waiver, they are not able to open at our show. We are encouraging artisans and vendors to open the backside of their booth to allow for air circulation. We are -- physical distancing of at least six feet will be encouraged through directional traffic flow. How we intend to manage this, you know, the large chalk that you see, especially for contracting, it's really bright spray chalk, we are going to have directional arrows up and down throughout the show, and it will be obvious for directional traffic flow. We have approximately 100 less vendors and artisans than we typically have for this event and are able to spread out because of that. In order to proceed with the event, it was recommended by the town staff and mayor to eliminate opportunities for gathering. We took that advice, and we have elimination of certain events to discourage gathering and to encourage continual flow of traffic, including but not limited to canceling our Saturday evening artist party, removal of the political row, canceling the beer garden, and canceling all entertainment. We also, as the chamber, are providing virtual check-in in order to discourage gathering and long lines at the Chamber Information Booth. We are removing our artist packets during check-in. Like I said, we are doubling our security personnel for enforcement, and we are providing a complementary disposable face mask, if needed, to attendees upon request. I have a stay informed section of our communication packet, and just to share with everyone that we do already have a fountainhillsartfairs.com website, and we will make sure to alter policies and procedures based on trends and mandates put forth by local, state, and national government and health officials, and for the most up-to-date information, it will be visible and available on our website. We also created a code of conduct and expectations for all guests that we will take the next six weeks to continually promote on social media and on our website, so the guests who attend our fair are not surprised by the expectations. And I'm going to read them to you now. Number one, face coverings required at all times per Maricopa County mask mandate. The Fountain Festival of Fine Arts and Crafts is offering a complementary disposable face mask to guests, if needed and while supplies last. Complementary hand sanitizer stations, as well as complementary hand washing stations will be available. Number two, it is encouraged that vehicles park one car space in between to maintain safe six-feet physical distancing, if possible. Number three, wash hands frequently with soap and water for at least 20 seconds, or use 60% alcohol-based hand sanitizer often. Number four, if you are feeling ill, showing any cold or flu-like symptoms, and/or have had a temperature of 100.4 or more, do not attend the Fountain Festival of Fine Arts and Crafts. Number five, always sneeze and/or cough into a tissue and immediately throw the tissue in the trash. Number six, we suggest not taking any printed material. Rather, offer the vendor, artisan, exhibitor, your email address to receive their information electronically. Number seven, it is recommended use your own pen to fill out any information or to proceed with payments. Number eight, avoid physical contact, including handshakes, high fives, embraces, et cetera. Number nine, never touch your face. Number 10, be mindful of everyone's personal space. Practice physical distancing of at least six feet. Number 11, if gloves are worn, please use 60% alcohol-based hand sanitizer often, or replace gloves often. Number 12, if you are at higher risk of developing severe illness from COVID-19, or you are an individual in contact with higher-risk patients, for example, residents in your same household, or long-term care facility employees, et cetera, please do not attend the Fall Fountain Festival of Fine Arts and Crafts. And number 13, if you have been in contact with someone who has tested positive for COVID-19 in the past 21 days, or has exhibited symptoms of COVID-19 within 21 days of the event, please do not attend the Fall Festival of Fine Arts and Crafts. Like we mentioned, there'll be enhanced and thorough cleaning and sanitation of the venue common areas, including restrooms, information booth, and seating areas. The above guidance is being given in consideration of the World Health Organization, the Arizona Health and Government officials, and the CDC guidelines set forth for large events and mass gatherings. Like I mentioned, our website already has information regarding our regular procedures for complementary parking, our regular FAQs, and all previously necessary information, but we will make sure to add all of the public health and safety guidelines, the code of conduct, and expectations from the guests that I shared, as well as our entire communication packet. I do also want to share, because many might not know this, if they don't have school-aged children, I have two young children who attend our local Fountain Hills Unified School District, and I wanted to share the most recent superintendent newsletter with you, which states, "Full in-person learning will begin October 19th," which is almost a month before event. Driving their decision is the improvement of our metrics on the Maricopa County Department of Public Health Dashboard, including and indicating we have improved in all three categories over the past three weeks. This event is pivotal in helping our local economy begin the recovery process. Our two art fairs directly give over $80,000 to our local nonprofit community between our two shows, who've had no way to fundraise or support their organizations for almost nine months by the time we have this November show. This amount is direct contributions and does not even include the sales taxes collected by the Town of Fountain Hills from the fairs for the hotels, the restaurants, the gas stations, shopping at our local businesses and grocery stores that all desperately need this increased revenue opportunity. We at the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce advocate on behalf of our business community and our nonprofit community. We conducted a 48-hour survey that started on Thursday, after we learned that we would be coming before you today, to ensure we are, in fact, representing our community and proceeding with this event based on their desires and their wishes, and this is the results of the survey. We had 65% in favor, without hearing of any of the public and safety health plan. We had 12% unsure, and we had 24% against. And again, that was before any of this information was laid out. And I'm open to taking any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. I will ask the council what they want to ask you, I'll comment, and then we'll hear from the public. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. So about every other statement that you have in here is, "You have to wear a mask," but on October 6th, I understand the supervisors, county supervisors, are going to look at this ordinance one more time, and if they give us a green flag, will you rewrite this, or how will you address that?
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. We on purpose said, "According to the Maricopa County mask mandate," because if that changes, then we will change accordingly.
Well thought out. Then, two quick questions. How many vendors do we have signed up this year?
Great question. What is typical for this year is 450 at this time. Right now, we have 315.
And you have six weeks left.
Yes.
Do you have any indication, do you suppose you might get up to the 450 mark again?
We have 120 who are waiting to hear from our safety plan and to hear if it's approved by the town again.
Thank you very much.
Other questions, comments? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Betsy, going back to the plan, the layout, the map of the avenue and so forth.
Yes.
I know you detailed the extra security over the three to four to five days, what have you. I'm seeing the one private security spot there at the avenue and Verde River. I'm just wondering, as far as the crowd control and the direction, I mean, all of us who've been out there know that, you know, usually, you know, there's one crowd going this way on the booths, and the other side's coming down this way, and the middle's kind of free-for-all. So, I mean, are you going to have people at all of the beginning of the arrows and the intersections and the crossover where the chamber booth is? Is that how you plan to do it?
So typically, our 12 security that are hired 24/7 from Wednesday through Sunday, typically, they roam throughout the event. So instead of having 12, we will have 25 roaming throughout the event. We will have signage placed at all of those points, and we can even add signage. It'll be very obvious, the directional flow arrows. However, we can have additional signage that states, "Please follow the arrows and only walk in the direction of the arrows," if necessary.
I mean, I guess I would recommend maybe having at least one stationary person at those places instead of roaming. Only, you know, I go to the grocery store, and I know at least Safeway has arrows, and I violated them just because I just don't pay attention, and so when you have a larger crowd, I think it might be a little bit more difficult, but just my suggestion.
Absolutely. And with the addition of 13, which happens to be the same number of all of the signs that we're posting, I don't see it a problem to have stationary security at those points.
And then to piggyback on Councilwoman Brown's question, so you're still, you could take more artists in over the next few weeks, depending tonight and everything else.
Okay.
Okay. And then, I don't know, maybe this is for Grady, but if, say, we say yes tonight, I mean, and for some reason, the numbers just skyrocket, I mean, is this something we can withdraw or cancel, or we don't really have that ability, or the chamber doesn't have that ability with their artists?
So, as the staff report indicates, if something happened with the numbers, and it becomes very obvious that this is a worsening condition for the pandemic, it does state that it may be necessary for the Fountain Fair to be canceled. Now, this would be something that wouldn't be done in a vacuum. I mean, this would be something that we would have, the mayor, myself, the staff, would have to kind of talk about this internally, and then also get together with Betsy and her staff. Again, part of the challenge with this whole pandemic is trying to forecast the future, and this is six, seven weeks out right now. So, you know, there's a lot of things at stake, particularly as you get closer to the event, and so that's, I would hope we wouldn't have to be in that situation.
Right.
And I don't have an easy answer for you, as you can tell.
Well, yeah, and we don't necessarily want to be in that position. I was just kind of, you know, kind of conjecturing.
But I do think we have to have a contingency, and we'll have to work with Betsy and her team on figuring out what that might be. There's a lot, I mean, they've taken money from folks, they have people that are probably coming cross-country, you know, it might be difficult to communicate with, so it would be a challenge to cancel, I would think, going forward.
I do want to share that when we released the applications on May 18th, we did have a COVID-19 statement that stated, if the local government, for any reason, we were not able to proceed, then, and we had to cancel the event, that all artisans and exhibitors would get 100% of their money back. So we, you know, have not just proceeded as if there was not, you know, we proceeded with caution, in other words, every step of the way.
I know the governor had a press conference late last week, and, you know, obviously, people have different opinions on how this has all been handled since March or what have you, but one of his quotes was, you know, "What you should look at is our positivity rate, our hospital capacity, our ICU capacity," which are all at all-time lows, low being the positive number that we want. And of course, he contributes, there's been a slight uptick the last, slight uptick in September, but of course, he attributes that to increased testing and more efficient testing, but I know that's up to argument. But I think since July, when we reached our peak, I mean, we have been on a really good downward trajectory, and I think we need to keep that in mind.
Betsy, outstanding presentation, and you clearly have thought this through in detail, and it's very impressive. There are a couple of things. On the vendor waiver, it says that booths will be wiped down and sanitized, shared surfaces, payments, and so on. I have a concern about how you go about enforcing that, and in that same vein, it says 10 people or less in a booth. I have a 10-by-15 booth. I guess 80% maybe have a 10-by-10 booth. That means people are on top of each other. If you want to go ahead, then I'll go on with a couple more.
Yes, so the booths are 11-by-14, and all of you who have attended our fair know that most of the booths handle three or four people max, and people do not crowd into that tiny space. We are just having to put a maximum of no more than 10 people in a booth, because there are some exhibitors and artisans who buy three or four booths that are larger. So we have the maximum amount of people of 10 or less within a booth. But quite frankly, most of the booths will not even accommodate more than three or four at a time, and people, especially right now, are not going to crowd in and try to put in more in that cramped space. The artisans that we've heard from are desperate to be able to have the opportunity to, for some, it's their sole income. And so when you ask about enforcement, I can't speak for all 315 of the artisans, but they are pretty much all willing to do whatever it takes at this point in order to move forward with this fair, including posting the mask mandate, including keeping and enforcing the amount of people within their booth, including hand sanitation and sanitizing their own booths.
My concern for that, and first of all, in a 10-by-15 booth, if I have four people, they're not six feet apart, they're practically touching each other, because I have tables with things and so on. Code of conduct and expectations for all guests, wash hands frequently with soap and water for at least 20 seconds, 60% alcohol. If you feel ill, don't come to the show. Never touch your face. These are all unenforced. These are all unenforceable.
They are all unenforceable, and these are adults, and they should obviously know these guidelines already. But we are going the extra mile to share with them all of the guidelines that they should be aware of when they're coming to an event. And this is all from a panel of doctors, a panel of experts from the CDC, from the World Health Organization. That's where we got all of this information to provide to you today.
Hi, Betsy. Nice presentation. So I have a couple of questions for you. At the chamber booth itself, I've been, I've worked the fair for many years, and I've seen a lot of people at the chamber booth getting information and that sort of thing. You don't have any sanitation there. Is that something you might give some consideration to?
We absolutely will. We actually, at the chamber, prior COVID, we, every single one of us as staff members had a huge bottle of hand sanitizer on our desks already because we shake hands all the time. So we actually do have hand sanitizers at the info booth already, but we'll make sure, like I said in the statement, for increased sanitation throughout, including the info booth. And because we've gotten rid of artist packets and because we're doing virtual check-in, we will not have the long lines that we've previously had at the chamber information booth.
And then in your outline there, you said face masks while the supply lasts. Do you know how many face masks you're going to start out with? So if we end up having to have face masks, shouldn't you be prepared for?
Absolutely. So I know an event that we had back in June in that small little window before we were able to have events, we had a small breakfast. I purchased 100 disposable masks. I think I gave away three. And so people already came with their masks, but we will have thousands of masks available and are able to purchase each day. So if we run out on Friday, guess what? Friday night, I'll be headed to Home Depot, and I'll be buying some more. So we will have more and more masks each day until our supplies run out.
Was there any thought given to just stopping the number of vendors where you're at, rather than keeping it wide open and having more vendors show up at the last minute and increasing the chances of overcrowding?
With the uncertainty of the proceeding of the event, we did not want to discourage artists from participating if we were able to do so. As you can imagine, we've been planning this event since last February, and so we needed to plan with confidence so that we could get all of the pieces in place to proceed. If we had put a limited number on the artisans and then everything had opened up completely, we would have really been putting us at a disadvantage, our local businesses at a disadvantage, the guests at a disadvantage. And so it's uncertain times right now, and so we did leave it open. That's correct.
And then one final question. Is any of the cost of this going to fall back on the town of Fountain Hills at all for your additional security, sanitize and stations, masks?
No, we are completely independent. We do not get any municipal funds. Great question.
Any other questions or comments from council? Well, we'll start taking the card comments then, and thank you, Betsy, and we'll see if we need to ask any more questions afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. First one is Sarah Nolan.
Just in support, not to speak.
Oh. You did say that. Okay. Then Dr. Michael Eisenberg.
I assume that all of you read the letter which I sent to the entire council, and I think the thing I would like to emphasize are two points. One is that the recent data reported in the paper, The Arizona Republic, and I have another source which indicate that things are not as rosy as the government makes it out to be. It seems to me from watching the news, there's a disconnect between how good things are according to the governor and how other outside sources outside the state say things are, and they just simply are not the same. One source, there was an article in The Arizona Republic just last week which pointed out that the, one piece of data from the dashboard indicates that the Maricopa County rate of infection is 55% higher than the national rate is. They also pointed out that the death rate here in Arizona is now the 10th highest of all the states in the country, and the overall infection rate is the fifth worst in the I don't know how the state is accumulating their data, but there's just not the same reports. And I think we need to pay attention to that. My main concern about the fair is that I think you've, the plan that has been described is very thorough, it's very well thought out, but it's just simply not going to be enforceable. I don't know who the general who made the comment, but I think the comment that I recall, and I'm paraphrasing here, is that you can plan like hell, but once the wars start, all the plans go down the toilet. And I think that is likely to happen here. You're going to take 50,000 to 100,000 people, put them in a relatively small space over a three-day period, and getting them all to walk in a one direction at the fair, keeping the people that go into the booths to a small number is going to be very difficult. I can see all kinds of problems with the mask wearing. You know, we live in a very conservative state and a very conservative area, and a lot of people don't want to wear masks, period, for whatever reasons they have. And I can, I'm concerned that they won't be willing to wear them here, and if confronted by our security personnel, some really ugly incidents can occur because they simply don't want to comply. And it just, once you get all these people in a space, I don't really, it's like trying to herd cats. I don't think you're going to be able to control the movement of the people, their behavior, and we're bringing, you know, we don't know how many people are going to be bringing this virus into our town. We simply don't know. And I think there's going to be a lot of people who will not be honest about their conditions.
Thank you, sir.
That's my time?
Yeah. Thanks, thanks a lot.
That is my main concern. The conditions are good, but they're just not going to be enforceable.
Thank you. Next is William Hines.
I'm William Hines. I think I know most of you. I'm a business owner here in town. I'm also the chairman this year of the chamber, and we've had a rough year, as a lot of businesses and nonprofits have. We took a very hard look at all of our events for the year. We know how important they are to the business community, and we canceled some, as you know. We modified some, as you know, and the ones that we really believe were safe, we've spent an incredible amount of time to put together a plan to make sure they're safe. We are, we are very concerned about the health and safety of our community, but we're also concerned about the business viability of our town. We're losing businesses, and we need to find a way to be good leaders. We need to find that balance between not doing anything. As a lender and a banker for many years, we had certain commercial lenders who said no to everything because they thought that was the path to never get fired. You'd never get in trouble if you just said no to everything. What happened was those banks died. So we're much like that. We need to grow our business community, and we need to be leaders that make smart decisions. So I can tell you, Betsy and our team have worked for countless hours to put together a plan so that we can stand behind being safe. I can go to Target and be wall-to-wall with people. I can go to Fry's. I can go to Safeway. I can come in this room where we're all breathing the same air. We really felt this event being outdoors in a fresh-air environment was as close as we could get to a safe place to put on an event like this. So I really hope you'll stand behind it. My business needs it, all the other businesses need it, and the chamber needs it. So that's it.
Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards I have. And then I also received several public comment cards.
Thank you. Do you have a tally that you can give us that would combine not only the speaker cards from here, but also what we had gotten online?
Sure. The ones I, well, I got one, other than the one lady, I got one other one in favor of it. And then the cards that we received online, we had one, four, and nine against.
So that looks a little bit like, I think, four to 10 just total, but obviously, that is just a small part. But we thank everybody who gave us their input. Any further, yes, councilman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll talk about some emails that were received by me. I received the doctors. I responded to you and told you thank you for sending me that information. Also received email comparing this event to Sturgis and then quoting a figure that 290,000 people were infected with COVID at Sturgis. That's not true. The results were that 177 to 193 people were infected at Sturgis, and there was over 490,000 participants. I've attended well over 20 Harley-Davidson rallies, and I can tell you just by friends that attended the Sturgis event, they didn't wear masks. They were in a bar. The top three ways to catch COVID is in a bar. So to compare the art festival to Sturgis is not a good comparison. So also received an email from a resident who, because of last Tuesday's meeting, during the report from council members, I had said that I was pleased to hear that the chamber was going forward with this event, and the person that emailed me said that I obviously was on the payroll of the Chamber of Commerce. So all my fellow council members up here, Director Lavoy, and everybody will know that there's been no harsher critic of the Chamber of Commerce at times than me. So it's laughable to say that I'm on the payroll of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm trying to make an informed decision that will help move the town forward, get this economy going, help businesses that desperately need help in this town. The latest statistics were that today, 248, I believe, 200 wrote it, no, 273 reported cases, one death. The numbers keep going down. So I just believe that, I personally think that people are grown, they're adults. We can tell them what to do. Hopefully, they'll follow it. I would like to say that a good number would be 200,000 people that would attend this, but I don't think that's a realistic number, not at the present time. I think people, I don't think you're going to see those kind of numbers. I hope you do, but I don't think you're going to see 200,000 people attend this. Also, it's an outdoor event, and if you have a core morbidity and you are susceptible to this disease, stay home. Buy your wind chimes another event. You can get them another time. Stay home. That's it. Stay home. So I just wanted to address some of the emails. I did receive positive emails, and I have talked to a couple of business owners who said that they're very much for it. And just one question, Betsy. You mentioned that there was going to be stuff put on the street, stickers, chalk paint and stuff. Should I assume that you guys will be responsible for removing all that after the event, the town?
Absolutely, councilmembers.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Oh, councilman.
Mayor, I did some checking myself, too, along with what Betsy found out. I know that Cave Creek is going to hold an event. Litchfield, as she mentioned, is going to hold an event. Scottsdale's got one on their website. I called the town of Scottsdale and talked to somebody who said they couldn't give me a definitive answer because things are changing all the time, but she said it's a good probability since it's still out on their website. And Tempe also has an event listed on their website. That's the first week of December. So other local towns are hosting events right around the same time we are. A couple of them are earlier, a couple of them are later. I also spoke to a doctor today, and I asked him what his thoughts were on the town hosting this event, and he's, this is a doctor that's an assistant professor of family, community, and preventive medicine at a local medical school in Phoenix. And this is his quote. He said he felt that the fair being outside would greatly minimize exposure and with the proper protocol, and not provide a significant health risk to the people attending it. So that was his thought on it. So I did do a little extra work on this and a little checking, and then we also found out that some of the pro football teams are letting people into their arenas now, and so are some of the college teams. So again, they're not opening it up to 300,000 people like some of those stadiums hold, but they are starting to gradually open up, so I just thought I would point that out.
Thank you, councilman. I almost hesitate to start talking about numbers or anecdotal sort of things because I was just in contact with a coach at a college, and their entire football season is now going to stop because they got, I don't know, almost the entire team tested positive. I also wanted to look at, and this isn't, it's just, I just want to balance because that's what Bill mentioned, balance. Just today, we were at the 4% of the spread. The rule is to be at under 4% for two weeks straight, but last Sunday, it was 5%. So I just want to, I think you all know that, we all know someone who knows someone who has a different story to tell about this terrible virus that has thrown us all into chaos and uncertainty. But again, to get back to the balance, I know that there are other events that we're talking about even as a town, and just because I have the ability to do this, I wanted to say that some of the events that we do go forward with or that we attend, I think we all individually and collectively make decisions on what risk levels we're willing to put ourselves into. So is it outdoors? That's a big one. What's the crowd size going to be? What's the time of exposure? So is it, you know, is it the movie in the park, or is it, you know, three days, or is it Sturgis? What sort of level of control do we have over that? So when we talk about the movie in the park, what are we going to do? When we talk about the turkey trot and those kind of things? So that, this is probably because I hear people say, well, if you're going to do one thing, why are you not going to do the other? Well, it's, they're very different situations, and everybody makes a decision for themselves on that. So it's not black and white. We all know that. Are there any other comments? I'm sorry?
Yes.
You have a comment? Okay, go right ahead.
One thing, which is, it doesn't make any difference to me what other towns are doing. My concern is what I was sworn to protect, which is the people of Fountain Hills. And I don't, this is not an easy one. I don't blame anybody on the council or anyone else for how they vote one way or another. I will say that, and a lot of you know this, I post, I did a post on Facebook Connection, which, and I sent one to Betsy in advance, and the response, and anybody can go look at it, I haven't counted, but it's something like 20 to 1 against holding the fair. Let me be very clear. Like everyone else, I don't like this situation. It's what we've been dealt, and it's hurting everyone. It's hurting businesses, it's hurting schoolchildren, it's hurting absolutely everyone, even people who are closeted at home. It's no fun, and I think we all understand that. I got an email that said I was being selfish, and I guess my response is, if wanting to protect the common good is selfish, then I'm guilty as charged. In this town, the average age is 59. More than half of the people getting the virus nationwide are over 60. If you're over 60, my guess is the chances are pretty good you've got a pre-existing condition, like my wife, who just finished six weeks of chemotherapy and radiation. This is very, very dangerous. Nearly half the states, I think it's 21 states, have seen an increase recently, and to my surprise, even New York is starting to see an increase. We aren't immune. The CDC by November said by November, it could be a lot worse, and that seems to be the attitude of almost all of the scientists, that that's what they see coming. And all you have to do is look at Europe. Europe, in many parts of Europe, they thought everything was fine. Now it's bad again, very bad. In Arizona, my colleague mentioned the number of cases per day, but if you multiply it out, Arizona's seeing nearly 15,000 cases per month. Maricopa County, more than 5,000 per month. And for deaths, we're number 10th in the country for deaths. And for deaths, we're number 10th in the country for deaths. That is the state of Arizona. I said earlier, and I say it again, I mean it. I admire Betsy and the chamber for what they've done. I understand they're in a terrible, terrible position, like lots of other people. And they plan to take precautions. But I thought for a minute about the precautions. If I thought the precautions would solve the problem, then I'd be participating myself in the fair. But I don't think they will. We had a hearing, which some, the council will remember, about two months ago on whether or not to require masks in Fountain Hills. Well, I got to tell you, all hell broke loose. One woman jumped up and said, I have my constitutional rights. Another man came to the podium and said, I'm not wearing a mask. I don't care what you do, you can arrest me. And that was the sentiment for almost everybody out there. So the idea that we're going to be able to enforce that and get people to wear masks, I think is misleading. Staying six feet apart, I mentioned that earlier. In a, my booth is 10 by 15. If I have four people in there, they're not six feet apart. I have tables with merchandise on them and so on. It's not like you have 10 by 15, open space. You don't. So people are not going to be six feet apart. They're going to be breathing on each other. Touching the merchandise. I have mats. I get stacks of mats. People go through all of them. They're touching everything. I don't see these people using hand sanitizer before they come to my booth. There's a question we need to ask ourselves. As difficult as this decision is, and I agree it is, which is more important, holding the fair or our community's health? I side with protecting the community's health.
Thank you, councilman.
Can I address one?
Oh, yes, sure.
So I'm, thank you, Councilmember Magazine. I do want to share with you, I know that you brought up Facebook. Our devoted and dedicated staff at the chamber actually went through all 981 comments on 10 different posts on Facebook that were on five different platforms and Facebook pages. We put together all of that data, which brought us 17% in favor of the fair, 11% a clear no for the fair. And 73% of the comments were arguments, memes, and did not speak to the fair at all. So the accurate, the accurate numbers is 17% in favor, 11% against.
Thank you. I don't argue that at all. I was, I was just looking at one, one site.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. So I also--
Thank you, Mayor. I also had posted out four comments from the public on the Fountain Hills Connection. And I want to just share a few of the results of that that all are still online, so all of you can verify my information. There were 76 total that wanted to have this fair and believed that we should move forward with approving this permit. There were 31 that said no. Some of the comments that I thought were relevant that I, I think are important to bring up. Snowbirds with the, you know, it's people with second homes, people moving here, that are coming from all kinds of different states are all coming to Arizona. So we are all going to be subject to being at the grocery stores, being at events, being at any type of public forums that you're going to be interacting with people that had social interaction in other states and aren't necessarily just isolated to Fountain Hills. I think we have to accept it as a reality that this virus is not going away. This virus is not going to magically have a vaccine that suddenly you're going to be immune to and that everything is going to be normal in life again. That's not the case. We have to accept that. The virus was around when the fair was, was in February in 2020. It was already here. Some people say the virus was here in the fall of 2019. So this is something that, in some of the comments, I'm going to, I'm going to make my own comments and add to. But, you know, the media and all of the fear that is in our society really escalated dramatically in the spring. And this was after the fair had already taken place in Fountain Hills in February. So if the virus was already here in February and we didn't have a massive outbreak, granted, we'd shut down the state. But I just think that it's relevant to bring that up, that it was already here in February and there were, and there were plenty of events going on. Expanding the footprint, that was something that was brought up. I think Councilman Mike, I think you brought that up. But I think that's not necessarily a bad idea to look at this existing plan and try to utilize some of the space, maybe even some of the space in the park. If anyone has any major objections, if this is not going to pass as just a straight vote to approve the special use permit, I would suggest we discuss the possibility of expanding the footprint so that maybe you have more space and we come up with solutions to try to figure out how we can make this happen, not how to not vote in favor. As, as Councilman Friddell had indicated, there's many events around the valley that are already still taking place. Tempe's having theirs, Litchfield Park, Cave Creek. Scottsdale's having many events. So everyone is dealing with the fact that this is real and this virus is real. And everyone is accepting the fact that we can't shut down our economy. We can't shut down our way of life. And we have to allow people to have freedoms to do things and to enjoy life and to go to events that they feel that they want to attend. It's, they're on their, they're on their own. They can decide whether or not to, they feel they're at risk. You make a good, Ellen, Councilman Magazine makes a point that Arizona has a high, higher, one of the top 10 in regards to deaths. Well, 70-plus is the highest risk category for this, this virus and the death rate. However, it should be noted, 94.6% survival rate over 70. Every other, every other age group, according to the CDC, is 99% plus. So while we're talking about, and we hear the terminology pandemic, this is a virus that has, has numbers that are comparable to some of the high flu seasons that we've had. So this is not something that, that if you get this virus, and this is the fear mongering, if you get this virus, suddenly you have a death sentence. My mother's 78 years old. She tested positive for this and she had the virus. And she had quarantined for two weeks. And she's in Connecticut. And Connecticut is on a much more lockdown than Arizona. And she has thankfully survived without any issues whatsoever. Some people had mentioned the fact that, why are we moving forward with potentially approving the art fair, but we are canceling all these other events? And I would agree with that. You know, the Thanksgiving Day Parade. I talked to Betsy today and I said, why aren't we having the parade? If we're moving forward with potentially approving a permit for the art fair, why aren't we having the parade? We've just now canceled the Halloween in the Hills. There's a lot of these events in town that I feel that should go on. And we should continue to make precautions and allow people to have the freedom. The doctor came up and spoke today. I read your letter. One of the things you said is, we're not going to be able to control the people. That's not, I don't want to control anyone. I want people to have the freedoms to make the decisions themselves. If they feel that they want to go to a restaurant and they want to enjoy themselves, I am not going to be one on this council or for that matter, any elected position in the future to pull back someone's freedoms. That's not our role. I feel that our role is to protect the Constitution and protect the freedom that people have in this country. Scare and fear tactics, as I said, are real. And the rhetoric is just out of control right now. Having movie in the park, we are going to have movie in the park. I understand. That's fantastic. Farmers markets, all of these things need to continue. The businesses, as, as the chairman, Bill Hines, had indicated for the chamber, businesses in this town are really suffering. And I'm not the only one that's noticed that we have tremendous vacancies in this town. And the vacancies aren't going to go away if we have a culture in this community that is anti-business or anti-working with business and anti-trying to create an environment in this community for people to be successful. So I think that Betsy, the CEO of the chamber, has done a fantastic job with her board. I think they've gone above and beyond to try to work out all of the details to have safety precautions. I understand, and the mayor, you can comment on this, but I understand that it was conversations between yourself and town, town staff in regards to eliminating the beer garden and eliminating some of the other amenities, such as entertainment for this event. I don't think that was, in my opinion, appropriate. I think those discussions should have taken place at this council. I think there could have been provisions to allow for entertainment and also allow for beer gardens. I don't think that was appropriate to put that stipulation on this chamber and to put the stipulation on those organizations that rely on a lot of that revenue for, for their local, for their local charities and things of that nature. So I would, I would, I would want to make a motion to not only approve the special use permit, but also to allow the CEO of the chamber and her board to come up with provisions if they believe that it's possible to have the entertainment, to have the beer garden, and to move forward with this art fair to try to make it as successful and as safe for our community as possible. Thank you.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
I just want to mention that Maricopa County doesn't allow for the alcohol at this point, and they're still not allowing food or alcohol. I think there might be some wiggle room in some of that, but--
Well, Mayor, commentary--
Excuse me. I just wanted to be clear before we continue to discuss your motion with the amendment.
My, Mayor, clarify. I said in my motion that to give the chair, to give the CEO and her board the opportunity to discuss this and come up with possible solutions, one of which may be having an extension of premises to current local restaurants in town that is allowable. So we have to give these businesses the opportunity to come up with solutions and be creative in how to move forward and have a successful event. That's what my motion was.
Well, could you--
And we have a second.
Real state.
The, the motion is then, are you clear on my motion? Okay, thank you. Again, if we discuss this motion, we should be aware that Maricopa County is not permitting that at this time.
Clarify that for us, Mayor, because I think what I said was to give the CEO of the chamber and the board an opportunity to discuss possibilities on how they could potentially have that. So I think that they would be able to evaluate what the rules and regulations are and determine whether there's any workarounds.
Agreed. But information is information. And as we discuss this, we should know what is out there. Council, Vice Mayor?
Just thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I understand the thinking there. I just don't know on a practical basis how that would work in terms of, I mean, I don't want to say carte blanche, but I don't, I don't see how the chamber coming up with alternatives, how that would work in terms of coming, I mean, are you proposing they come back to this body? Or, you know, we're given a permit here with some conditions that you're adding, like, oh, if it works, fine. But I, I'm comfortable with the original approval that we gave at staff level and the conditions that the chamber already agreed to.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm fairly close with the VFW. And this beer garden that they have is truly the only large moneymaker they've got for their entire annual budget. And I have to agree that if we can figure out how to have 200,000 people come to town and if we can figure out how to keep them all going in the same direction, I would like to think that we're smart enough to be able to help the VFW continue to have their beer garden. Only if, and I think Councilman Tullis said it spot on, only if the chamber can figure out how to work it out with the county and figure out how to space it apart. I like the idea of maybe utilizing a little more of the property around the fountain. I like that idea, spread them out a little bit if you need to. If, if you need to, I'm certainly not going to give you directions on what to do or how to do it. But that is a good recommendation, especially if we can figure out how to also help the VFW and the Rotary and all the different organizations that, that this, this fair helps. And, and seriously, the VFW, yet this pays most of the bills. So I would like to at least give Arts, Councilman Tullis's motion consideration.
Councilman?
If I may, Betsy, I have one question. What is your plan on how to enforce masks?
Like I mentioned, we will have announcements throughout the event. We have doubled our security. We will have it posted at every single event booth. And it's a Maricopa County mask ordinance. How is it enforced anywhere? I mean, if somebody is not abiding by the law, we will ask them to please wear a mask.
Well, somebody walks into a booth and says, like the fella did at the podium, I'm not wearing a mask, you'll have to, you'll have to arrest me. How do you deal with that?
We have 28 security personnel plus MCSO for the weekend. And as we do in any other fair, this will not be the first time we have someone unruly, unfortunately, at a fair. And that's why we have security. If someone is unruly, we call security.
Okay.
Thanks. Point of clarification, because we do a good enough job making residents mad. We did not cancel the Halloween and we did not cancel the Thanksgiving Day Parade. So don't send us emails blaming us for stealing Halloween and stealing the Thanksgiving Day Parade because we didn't have anything to do with that. Would you please--
Absolutely.
--tell everybody why that was canceled and it didn't have to do with this body?
Yes. I would love to bring clarity to those two events. The Halloween in the Hills is host, is hosted by Sammy's Fine Jewelry and Unique Gifts, a private business here in town. We are lucky to have them put on that event for over 10 years just as a service to our town. That was her decision and her decision alone to pivot and do a virtual type event instead. They are great chamber partners and we support her in her decision with uncertainties. I don't blame her, quite frankly. She just does it out of the nicest of her heart and it is a lot of work. The Thanksgiving Day Parade, we, the Chamber of Commerce, put on the Thanksgiving Day Parade. We love the Thanksgiving Day Parade. That was a very hard decision to make and our Board of Directors voted unanimously to cancel the parade this year. And it was not because of COVID-19 safety requirements. It was 100% because people were not participating in the parade. Let me give you a few examples. One of the very favorite parade entries in our parade is the Fountain Hills High School marching band. Because kids are not schooling, had not been schooling together and were schooling at home, the marching band was not really in existence. Their numbers were a record low. They were not able to participate in our parade this year. That was one of 65 entrants that were not able to participate in our parade this year. We had less than 10 who had said that they could and would. Most are nonprofits and they've not been meeting. So to gather all of a sudden, to create a float, which is not in the cards this year. So it was a difficult decision, but we did have to cancel the parade this year.
Thank you, Councilman. So obviously, it's not a surprise that this entire time I've been focused on safety concerns about the pandemic. The CDC guidelines that you are referencing, you're careful referencing, and your obviously really strong intentions to enforce it. We talk about maybe having 400 booths. Maybe the masks will be gone by then. It's probably not going to surprise you that I'm, I'm, I'm too reluctant and will not be able to support it. I believe it will go forward. But given that, we have a motion that included a possible beer garden and other accommodations. So if you are ready to take a vote on that particular motion, we can do that. And if that passes, then we'll go ahead. If not, then we'll entertain another motion.
And if it helps this council in regards to their decision-making on that motion, I'd be willing to add to allow Betsy and her board maybe a week, two weeks, to come up with a potential plan to have a beer garden and determine whether or not you can meet the guidelines and have something successful. Would that give you enough time?
Absolutely. But like Mayor Dickey said, the county is not giving any liquor permit. So we would have to, yes, I think a week or 10 days or two weeks would allow us enough time to find out if there's any other alternative through a restaurant perhaps in order to support the VFW. We've met the VFW over Zoom three or four times page in order to support them. We're trying to do whatever we can to bring forth-- them. We're trying to do whatever we can to bring forth another avenue of income for them, because, you know, we've worked with them for 40 years, and we want what's best for them as well. So, appreciate the consideration.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Shall we put a date on that amendment? Would that give you a comfort level to allow for her to have some time to discuss with her board to determine whether or not she can come up with options? Maybe the 12th of October, that'd be two weeks from today?
Yeah, that's okay, but of course, we're going to be overruled if Maricopa County Board of Supervisors somehow says that that's not a go.
And that's Betsy and her board, that's their role, that's their responsibility to determine what they can or can't do. Maybe they can work with a local restaurant or something, but those discussions will be between her and board. So, I'm in that motion to add that date to allow her, two weeks from today, to report back to our town manager, and then therefore, if we need to have any type of additional consideration, if necessary.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, still have a question. Maybe it's for Grady. As the situation stands now, if a restaurant wanted to have an extension of premises for alcohol, I've, you know, I've been to Colorado this summer in California, and I've seen restaurants, you know, take over parking spaces and put up little cubicle things with tables and such, and I assume that would be through the liquor department, and they could achieve that now if they wanted to, correct?
Well, that's a good question. So, when we had the council approve a number of the pandemic business assistance programs, one of the items that the council approved was the administrative approval for the extension of premises. Our understanding, if I'm not mistaken, is that right now, the extension of premises would be for food only, because the State Liquor License Control Board has already approved their liquor licenses for the space that they already have on file. They would have to go through that, and of course, they have to demonstrate that they have social distancing and all the other things required, which right now, they're at a 50% capacity reduction for restaurants.
So, it's just a lengthy process, then? It's there, but it's just lengthy, or it's not there for alcohol?
I'm just telling you, I'm surmising, because I'm not familiar with anybody. First of all, I wish, but we've not had anybody approach the town about administrative approval of their extension of premises, so I haven't heard from the other side as to what it takes or what's involved with the State Liquor License Control Board to grant an extension of their current existing license to be beyond what previously had been approved.
Well, I mean, it has been over 100, so you probably wouldn't see any, but, you know, maybe it'll start breaking here soon, but maybe, hopefully, in time for the fair, of course. But, so, you know, I'm thinking that option kind of exists for restaurants and stuff right now, and then just to address the motion a little bit more, you know, I understand, okay, there's a date now. I just think, you know, this council's already kind of going to bat for the Chamber, just approving the staff recommendation. So, I think to go beyond that, I just, I personally am not comfortable. And I have a lot of great friends in VFW, too, trust me, and I know it's a big moneymaker, but, you know, I just don't know if we've already made exceptions, and some people don't want this at all. So, I think we're already working with the Chamber.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Mike, giving the Chamber Board and the CEO the opportunity to explore options, and if they were able to come up with a solution that's a win-win for maybe the VFW, maybe one of the restaurants in town, maybe a combination of the two, including potentially having some sort of entertainment, which was also part of that motion, would you be against that? Because I'm not here to solve their problem. I'm just giving them the opportunity to solve it themselves.
Well, I mean, so, they'd come back to staff by October 12th? Is that what you're saying?
They'd come back and say, "Here's our proposal. This complies with the state mandates. This complies with the necessary requirements, and if it complies, then why would we not want that?"
Councilman, Mayor, I mean, Mayor, Manager, do you think that the staff would want some input on any of this, or would you like some input on this?
Well, I would like to just say a few things. So, the reason why this was suggested in the first place is, having actually seen and observed the beer garden area, one of the things that they're trying to prevent is congregating of people. I mean, what I mean by that is, sometimes those areas are very full of people that are not related to one another. There's crowding going on, and I don't mean that in a bad way, but it's just the nature of the event. And so, the live entertainment tends to keep people there longer. So, a lot of the age of the people that are hanging in the beer gardens tend to be the 65-plus in general. So, that was the thinking behind that.
Okay, Mayor.
And I just want to say, too, to be clear, that I didn't make this up. It was something that was presented to me, that this could work if we eliminated some of the congregating, which included music, seating, beer garden, and maybe even food, but we'll have to see how that works.
Mayor, I understand your logic and your thinking, and Town Manager Miller, I understand your logic and thinking as well. However, if they're complying with the rules and regulations, if they create an environment that they are able to have the social distancing that's required, if they have entertainment, and if people go, and they want to enjoy the music, and they want to enjoy a beer or something of that nature, to say, "Well, the people that go are over 60, and they're at the highest risk," they know they're at the highest risk. They know that they are going to this event. We cannot micromanage people's behaviors. We have to allow them to make their own decisions, as long as what's being created is in compliance with the county regulations. You know, to say that we feel that they're at risk and we're going to shut them down is to say that we're not going to have restaurants and bars in this town available to have entertainment. People congregate. That's what's happening right now. That's exactly what's happening right now. So, again, I think we're going on, we are really going down a path of control of people, and that is not what we should be doing. We should be creating the environment for businesses to succeed, as long as they are playing by the rules of the county, and that's Betsy and her board's prerogative to determine whether or not they can make that happen. That's all we're doing right now, as a council, if we vote on this motion to approve, is giving her the opportunity to see whether or not they can make this happen, rather than dictate to her, "You can't have entertainment, and you can't have a beer garden." We're saying, if you can do it and comply with the county rules and regulations, then we are going to accept that as a council, and I think that's the right thing to do.
I call the question.
Okay, so, we have to vote on calling the question, right?
You need the second.
Dennis said second, did it?
All in favor of calling the question, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so, we're going to vote on the motion, and I guess we'll do a roll call. That'll be all right? We will, please, Liz, would you do a roll call for that?
You bet.
Okay, Councilman Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Friddell?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Nay.
Councilmember Tullis?
Aye.
Councilmember Spellicce?
Aye.
Mayor Dickey?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Charnow?
Nay.
Motion passes four to three. Thank you. Any other discussion or items to bring up? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. We're adjourned. All in favor, say aye.